All right.
Yeah, I would say let's go. Six. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the patriots, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And the first order of business tonight is we are swearing in our new police officer, Chad. Let's give her a big hand right now.
Okay. We can see you.
Hey.
The right front and center. You guys taking pictures? Okay, raise that right hand and repeat after me. I, Katerina Hunt, faithfully swear.
I, Katerina Hunt, faithfully swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Missouri.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Shrewsbury.
And the ordinances of the city of Shrewsbury.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in the office of police officer.
And I will faithfully demean myself in the office of police officer.
For which I am appointed this twenty eighth day of December, twenty twenty two.
Which I am appointed this day, twenty eighth, December of twenty twenty two.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please. Never wanted to try.
Get in there, Brian. Little more. Double up like you guys like each other. There it is. Congratulations. Welcome forward. Right? One more with the little guy. Look at that little guy in there.
You can both come in. You can both come in.
Perfect. Perfect.
We're not on the.
Perfect.
Thank you. You guys do not have to.
No more fun.
Okay.
Roll call.
Yeah. All right, Elliot, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer I or nay or excuse me here when I call your names for the roll for tonight. I know we're jumping right to the business. Alderman Louder.
Here.
Alderman Peters.
Here.
Alderman Odenwald.
Here.
Alderson Reeves.
Yes.
Alderman Schmelzley.
Here.
Alderson Welch.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. And Betty, hope you're feeling better.
I'll live.
Oh, okay. Good, yeah. All right. We need to approve the minutes of our December twentieth, twenty twenty two work session, but I believe there is an amendment and to be made. Diana, would you like to explain? And then we'll ask Bill Nelson.
So we're doing thirteen first.
I've got the twenty.
Well, so she had an amendment to the thirteen.
Oh, you have. Well, I'm sorry. We're going to do the amendment to the thirteen. Which was, so everybody understands, the these minutes were already approved. And Miss Mead has asked for us to amend those minutes to reflect what what she had actually said in that meeting. And I'm just going to have her explain.
Board, I sent an email late this afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Prior to the December twentieth meeting, I had discussed one sentence within the minutes from December thirteenth. The sentence that I am asking to be stricken from the minutes is Director Madrid responded that the majority of the pay increases in July went to the police and fire department personnel. The background on that is the mayor did ask me to comment about the pay raises. However, we were still in the public hearing for the budget. So the public hearing continued. I was asked to calculate the amount and percent of the raise was given in July, twenty twenty two, approximately fifty minutes prior to the meeting on December thirteenth. The information was distributed to the board. However, I did not report to the public the amount and percent of the raises given. And therefore, I am requesting that the sentence be stricken from the record.
Thank you. All right. First, I need a motion to amend the December thirteenth minutes.
Motion to amend.
Sorry, good.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion, December thirteenth minutes are amended as such. Thank you.
I also would like to do an amendment, which I noticed too. I just want to, if that's okay, very brief, just to clearly, if that's okay.
We're talking the same minutes.
Same minutes. Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that I had, that we put in there that I had stated that six out of the ten years that we were, had frozen salaries, that was not implemented within there. I just like to have that for the record points. And there was another point that I brought up. Can I, what page is that on? Sorry. Oh, you're kidding me on that one. I want to say it was page five, but. No, I mean, there was in the budgets and everything else. Um, you know why? I apologize for not having the specific location of where I noticed. I just noticed that it wasn't in there. And I did state it because I don't read anything, so probably it's broken. I would be happy to amend the minutes to reflect that if the board votes to do so, I do need to know where you want me to put it. I'd be happy to just stick it in as a. Right where I had, I think I spoke. Added, and I just. And you know what? Maybe, you know what? I apologize. That was for, not for those meeting minutes, for the recent meeting.
For the twentieth?
Yes. Okay.
All right. So we have, we have a vote to amend the December thirteenth minutes now.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I apologize.
That's all right. It gets confusing, I know. All right, now we get to, we need to approve the December twentieth work session minute, uh, meeting minutes. And
Those are.
With that, do I have any, do I have a motion?
That's where I'd like to say I'd just like to have it for clarification purposes. Again, you're going to ask me to page, I know it. And I wish I could find that I shouldn't have had that. So one thing I should have probably written down. Page four. Under old business. The salary conversation. No, that's. Oh, boy. No, there was, it referenced me as stating that I talked about the Webster, I referenced the Webster Kirkwood. That would be all the way at the end of old business, the last statement in old business on page five. Thought it was five, but good. Yes, thank you. It's right above the new business part. Yep. And it talks about the city of Webster projecting a one million budget deficit and that you had the five year strategic plan. And I did mention that. I just wanted to make sure that I also had within my point that I spoke with that, that I mentioned that six out of the ten years that the salaries were frozen. And more importantly, the second part of my statement is I talked about a hundred and five thousand dollars up to two million projected from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty two. I had talked about the multimillion dollar budget for two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty seven. And that was from from a, they have a negative two point three million, and it goes up to two thousand twenty seven at negative eight point nine. So it's growing towards a negative percentage. I just want to make sure that's entered in because I didn't see that. And I did mention that as well.
Great. Is that clear? Would be.
I think so. I've got, you, you did mention that the city of Shrewsbury was in a salary freeze for six out of the last ten years. And then you stated that between two thousand and five, the deficit in Webster went from one hundred and five thousand dollars up to, up or up to two million dollars and is projected to go up to two point five million dollars. Two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty seven, it was supposed to go from two point three million to negative eight point nine. I know they've done a much better job of grasping some of the challenges that they've had, much like I think we're all trying to do. But I just want to make sure that I, that was entered into the meeting. That's certain.
Sure.
Thank you.
You've got that.
Yep.
Clear. Okay.
So is, that's a motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend the December twentieth minutes. Do we have a second to that?
A second there.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, Elliot, do we have any citizens that have presented?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We do have one.
I'm sorry, Elliot. Okay, I'm sorry. I missed a step. Now we need to approve the, we've approved the amendment. Now we need to approve the December twentieth minutes. So do I have, as an amendment, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second, second motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Thank you, Sunny. All right. And Elliot, do we have any previously written comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one that was submitted in regards to tonight's discussion of the flock cameras. It was submitted by resident Drew McDermott, who resides at five one two five St. Charles Place. And the entirety of that has been included in the packet for public consumption and is five pages long. And I did inform Mr. McDermott that I would not be reading the entirety of his public comment, but would note that it is included in the packet and available on the website for anybody interested in viewing it.
All right, let's move on to ordinances for consideration. Three oh seven three marijuana sales tax ballot language. Elliot, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, in your packets, and as was previously discussed, is a draft bill that would add to the April twenty twenty three ballot, a measure imposing a three percent sales tax on retail sales of non-medical marijuana. This is again in, as a reaction to the recent legalization of recreational marijuana in the state of Missouri and the the allowance from the state in, included in there to tax it up, tax the sale up to three percent locally. While we do not have any dispensaries, as was previously discussed, we may in the future, and if so, we wouldn't be able to recoup any retail sales from that unless we pass this, the voters pass this, this measure. This is our first opportunity to do so, and several other municipalities in St. Louis County are doing so. They are all doing so under the proposition Title M. And if the board does want to move forward with this and put it on the April ballot, we would need a first and second and first and second reading and final passage of this evening due to the certification deadline for the April election. And this bill, this draft bill was sponsored by Alderman Louder to put it on this evening's agenda.
All right. And just to be perfectly clear on the timing of this, you're saying we need to do it tonight if we're going to get it on the April ballot. But are there any time constraints that would be working against us for a future election or?
We could put this on any future ballot, any future ballot that the board wants to put it on. I don't think there's a limitation on how many times you can put it on a ballot, too, if it does, if it were to fail.
Right. But I just wanted that out there to stress this, so nobody feels like we're, we're forcing an issue here. All right, with that, I would need a motion for the, for, with that consideration, I would need a motion for the first reading of Bill three oh seven three.
I'll make that motion for the first reading of Bill three oh seven three.
Do I? My child, I love me. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second, a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I had a question. So this is an ordinance for non-medical marijuana, which it seems like that's the direction it's going. I guess like, it seems like a non-medical marijuana is the direction this is going. What happens if, for some reason, down the line, a medical marijuana only store comes in?
Those have separate taxing regulations from this, so a separate retail set tax would have to be imposed per a separate vote. I do know that our codes already include medical marijuana regulations. The, so if we were to get a medical dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary, we do have a process for that. And there's zoning codes associated with that. But at this time, there, there hasn't been a vote to tax those. So we would just have to do that separately.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question here. Do we currently have any interested parties in bringing a dispensary to Shrewsbury? Because to me, it doesn't make much sense to pass and put a tax on the ballot when we just passed a couple of propositions. If there's nothing pressing with this, and there's nothing, you know, imminent as far as having a dispensary come here, I think we should push this to a later date into twenty twenty three.
To answer your question, I am not aware of any potential new businesses that would sell recreational marijuana at this time.
And my understanding is this would, this ordinance would just allow us to do it if we decided to do it in the future. This has nothing to do with approving those dispensaries. That's a whole separate process.
No, I understand that. I just think, I think adding, putting a ballot initiative for the next election, I think it will have negative. I think it will come with negative support. So I think that if, if we don't have anything pressing, we should hold off and put it down the road and discuss it when, you know, some of the, the past propositions and some of the sentiment towards that has settled. So when we actually have a dispensary that might be looking to open up, so.
If, if we get so piggybacking off of Alder, it's piggybacking off that thought. So if we get a dispensary in between now and the next time we can put it, put this on the ballot, can we collect any sales tax?
Uh, no. Not until a ballot measure is passed by the voters.
This just would allow us to keep that, that option open for us. But again, like I said, it's a completely separate process. That being said, is there any other discussion?
I got my hand up. I have my hand up. Okay, well, the way I see this thing, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to put it on. We'll find out if even our citizens would even want a dispensary. You know, if they vote it down, we'll just put it on again when we do have one. But it's one of those things is if, if I'm not, if we're worried about what the optics are with putting another tax increase on, I'm not going to pay this tax unless I buy marijuana, just like I'm not going to pay an alcohol tax unless I buy beer. I'm not going to pay a cigarette tax unless I buy, you know, cigarettes. So it's kind of like the consumer is footing the bill, not our residents. So if somebody comes in from a town that doesn't have a dispensary and buys recreational marijuana in Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury benefits from that person making that trip here. So I don't see, it's more of a consumer tax as opposed to you're, don't want the optics to look bad because we just had tax creases, increases on the ballot. Thanks.
I would just like to make note that if we were, if we were to hold off, you would still have a ballot opportunity in August, November, and then April of twenty twenty four. All I'm saying is, is that there's no immediate rush to get this on the ballot because we don't have one. And I highly doubt between now, April, and then now in August, that we're all of a sudden going to have a dispensary open up.
I would note that this would be the cheapest option for the city, the April ballot. It's a little more expensive with less municipalities participating in the ballot. That, that's the only real benefit to doing it now versus a later, a later election.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the first reading?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Nay.
Nay, all right.
Bill number three zero seven three, an ordinance imposing a sales tax that are rated three percent on all tangible personal property retail sales of adult use, non-medical marijuana sold within the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri, pursuant to Article fourteen, section two point six of section five of the Missouri Constitution, subject to the approval of the voters of the city of Shrewsbury. Missouri at the general municipal election to be held on April four, twenty twenty three, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election.
With that, I need a motion for second reading.
Motion for a second reading of Bill number three zero seven three.
Second.
We have a motion in a section, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
A second reading of Bill number three zero seven three, an ordinance imposing a sales tax that rate three percent of all tangible personal property retail sales of adult use, non-medical marijuana sold within the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri, pursuant to Article fourteen, section two point six five of the Missouri Constitution, subject to the approval of the voters of the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri, at the general municipal election to be held on April four, twenty twenty three, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election.
All right. I need a motion for final passage.
Motion for final passage of Bill number three zero seven three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Elliot, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this roll call vote, please answer I or nay when I call your name. Alderman Odenwald.
Nay.
Alderson Welch.
Yay.
Alderman Schmelzley.
Aye.
Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderman Louder.
Aye.
Alderson Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, Bill three zero seven three passes with majority support and becomes ordinance three zero five four.
All right, very good. Thank you. And now let's move on to item E, which is the block license plate reading cameras slash grant funding. And Chief Argus will give the court to you.
Everybody.
Good evening.
Um, as I asked that this be put on tonight's agenda, just so that I could let you know that I would be, I'm hoping to get it passed. We're going to have more discussion on the twenty fourth. I just wanted to remind you that we received a grant from the state to get, have eight cameras placed in Shrewsbury City Limits to help with investigations and such. I did get the packet that Mr. McDermott sent in. We will have block representatives here, most likely via Zoom for the twenty fourth work session to answer those kind of questions. We have a lot of agencies in the St. Louis, St. Charles, Jefferson County area that have, are currently using block cameras. We've looked them on numerous, on numerous investigations. We had a meeting with the block people this morning, and they were telling me about someone in Chesterfield that they were able to locate someone who was in medical distress after a welfare check because they could find the license plate, they found the car. So there's a lot of benefits to this system. It is strictly a license plate reader, license plate reader. It does not do facial recognition or any of that, doesn't give personal information, nothing like that. We're working on the department policy for that, which will also be ready for you for the meeting on the twenty fourth. So you can see the restrictions that will be held in place for the officers as well. And have a lot more information for you or question, answered just some questions that you may have from the people who know the technological portion of it, because I do not. Um, but I want you to be able to have an opportunity to speak with them. And so that's why I wanted to put it on the agenda this evening to give you a heads up and to give the residents a heads up as well, that we'll have somebody here to answer any questions or concerns that they may have at the work session on the twenty fourth.
Any questions? It's chief.
I was, I was just concerned with the legal requirements, our legal liability for the city of Shrewsbury. It seems like under this number nine indemnification, it just seems like block is not liable for anything, it seems like. And under number ten, it's got under miscellaneous, it says the agency will comply with our local state laws. And I think based on the citizens' comment that we, we got through the email, one of the other concerns is the if we go ahead and pursue somebody based on this, is it an invasion of privacy, number one? And number two?
Sorry, if you do what?
If we do go for, I apologize, if we do go farward with an arrest or, or something like that, is it legal that we can do that based on this without a warrant?
Yes, we can. We run plates all, all day long. Your license plate on your car, that's the only thing that's read. And it can read the color of a car and the make of a car. So Honda, a red Honda, that type of thing. It can go in and look for those. It can't, it won't look for a name. It won't look for that type of thing. It doesn't give us live where we're following people. It just gives us real time display, just went by this camera type of information. But police officers have the ability to run a license plate every day. And so it will give us the, if there's a, if it's a stolen vehicle, if there's somebody that's wanted in the car, it'll have a hit on that plate that there's a wanted on that vehicle. There's still investigation that you have to do in that before you stop them. It's just giving us, it's just another tool basically in the toolbox. So yeah, it's definitely legal.
Okay.
But I won't, and I guess I should say, Mr. Damien will have a copy. He's received a copy of this. He'll be able to give the legal side of this because I'm not an attorney.
And with.
And I don't play one on TV.
Been reading through a little bit more as far as the comments, I mean, the gentleman's comments, the letter, there's a lot more history in reading license plate to just to see if it's been stolen vehicle or not.
Correct.
And it gives a lot more history. And that's where I see that there's the potential for some of our liability.
The license, the reader won't give the history. The reader will give the officer notification that the license plate is stolen. The officer will then have to run the plate to find that out, to find out what the, what situation is with that, is my understanding. It will not give information on, on personally, it will not give out personal information at all.
Okay.
And it's held in a government cloud that is the same cloud that, that the federal government uses. So it's got, can't remember what all the technical terms are for it, but it's secure, a secure site. And then at every thirty days, anything that we have in there will be purged. So it's nothing that we keep for months on end. I know that a similar, I don't know that it was blocked, but I know that a similar system was used or has been used and being used in the investigation in the Idaho college murders. They're able to, they've been able to track where his vehicle was to try to get his route to see if they can find anything along that. So there's a lot of good investigative resource within this one camera system.
Okay.
Have the city attorneys had a chance to take a look at the document presented from Mr. McDermott?
Yeah, yes, it has been given to Mike. Elliot, do you have an update on that?
He's reviewed it, and Ms. Sims has also had a preliminary review of it. I'm sure they'd be able, or. Uh, he's reviewed it and, uh, Ms. Sims has also had a preliminary review of it. I'm sure they'd be able, or, uh, Ms. Sims would be able to provide some preliminary feedback on it.
Oh, I I did review it. Um, I will, I will say, I mean, this this doesn't appear to be a, um. A legal brief, I'm not sure what the source of, you know, where this was obtained. And some of the citations, most of them are from, um. Briefs or 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 articles about plot cameras, not a single reference is made to Missouri law. Um, I will note that the case that was cited, uh, most prominently was a Massachusetts Supreme Court case. In which the Supreme Court of Massachusetts determined that the use of the block cameras in that case. Did not constitute a search within the meaning of the Massachusetts constitution and the fourth amendment. I wanna, I mean, I didn't. I didn't fall into a rabbit hole of, you know, researching. I have, I brought a, I brought a copy of that case. If you wanna, it it speaks for itself. So, um. You know, I I I have heard antecdotally very good things coming out of the use of these cameras and and in light of what your chief has described, the method in which it's being. Uh, used, um, I I. I'm not seeing search and seizure implications at that stage.
And to recap, cost of the city of this?
Uh, we won't have any cost for the first year. If we decide to keep them for the course year, it's twenty thousand dollars per year. But if we decide not to, we're not bound to that. We can just tell them that we're not going to have access to them yet.
So no cost for this year, twenty thousand? Is there any grants out there that could be?
We will be applying for grants. That's how we got this one. So we'll be applying annually for the grant to to.
So we'll have the option of.
Correct.
Yes or no?
Correct.
It'll come before the board.
Right.
I also looked at this as two separate issues. I looked at it as one is in companies that may have a block camera within their established points, a retail setting, for example. They will give us rights with permission to review that. I start to look at this a little bit more in depth when we, as a city, start to inquire about that. That's where my defining lines are. I believe that, and I don't want to speak for Mr. McDermott, but I think that more of his concern is. Thirty days that you've mentioned, just I'm putting this out there so that the twenty fourth, they can address this, that. Where is it clearly stated that it's deleted, uh, after thirty days or how, I mean, he. He wants more proof than the police, I believe.
No, I understand.
And then I also, what I'm also looking at is the hit rate, uh, is often less than one percent. Usually hovers about point five. I think that's something that we need to look at. I think that our rate has been pretty high. I'd like to think that is more than one, but.
Most definitely.
That really shouldn't be the overall. I think his concerns are. Are we keeping the data?
Right.
Where is it being stored at? And that's a further concern. And I can appreciate where he's coming from because he is an IT individual and he's.
Totally understand.
Very important, uh, to make sure we're able to address these with block.
Right. And when they come in on the twenty fourth, they have all that, they'll be able to explain that. And I would have to look into the contract. It's been a week, couple of weeks since I've actually looked through it in. Um, detail, but there is something in there that says it gets deleted after thirty days for us. We will have a very, um, we don't have access to it. We'll just automatically do that. I've got the name of. Whole lot of cities, if any of you want to talk to them between now and then, um, within the St. Louis area that are currently, that currently have these systems up and running for their police departments. The property owners at McKenzie Point have already installed these cameras in their business, and that's what we've been using through town. They gave us access to those. They will not have access to ours, nor will they have access to any other police department. Only police agencies can be able to see. Other departments, but we have. The ability to look at any of the cameras or the, not cameras, but the shots that they're taking. Which is how we've been able to track down some of the people wanting a burglary, several in stolen cars, that type of thing, to see where these plates are and get an actual location of where we can find it.
And a final point that I also think that since he highlighted, I want to make sure that I share this with everyone that. He stated that there is, within the study, that there is no independent means of tracking records based upon the nature of certain information. Uh, that may be obtained or used within an investigation. So I just, I think that's important for us all to kind of think about. Uh, again, the twenty fourth, I think we'll be able to focus on this a little more, but I think it's important to mention some of the concerns, two billion plates. So that's a lot. So we do want to make sure that we're doing it right and if there's a way to put restrictions or side rails, maybe we need to look at that.
The technological world in which we live.
Yes.
That's a pittance compared to how many times your phone has been picking off things and you're able to locate that. So. I can pretty much guarantee you, there's not nearly as many license plate reader plates read as there are phone things going on. So. It is the technological world in which we live.
Absolutely. Just wanted, I think it's important that we address his concerns.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Good comments and and concerns. And I saw you flash a lot of yellow there as far as.
Oh, no, I have.
I'm sorry.
A few. I'm sorry. Um, I wanted to bring these up earlier than later. Um. For you're talking about getting eight cameras. The locations of the cameras.
We're wanting to put them at the entrances, basically intersections at the entrances to the city. So one coming off the highway, um, at LaCleed Station Road near Murdoch, Willceusen area. Anyplace where a car would come into our city, not, we're not doing it within the neighborhoods or anything. It's where they're coming into our city where we'll know what. If something comes in, we'll have an, um, opportunity to try to locate that vehicle if it comes up that it's a hot vehicle or something like that.
I think that would be my concern is that how close to, I can understand the entrances to the city, but at the same time, how close to residential areas, you know, are. It's the eight going to be realistically, you know, like.
You're gonna have, my under, and I I would have to go back because they came in and asked us for locations and they have to get, because I think there's only one intersection that we actually got a city-owned hole. So they have to get, um. Block has to get permission from county and from the state because coming off the highway, that would be a state. Owned location. So they do all that. We don't have to do any of that. Um, so we're looking at somewhere down near the intersection at Ramsdown and Murdock Cut Off. Big Ben and Shrewsbury, LaCleed Station Road and Big Ben. Coming off the highway at Shrewsbury and forty four, coming off the highway at LaCleed. Um, LaCleed and. Somewhere down near Georgetown Apartments to get traffic coming in from the North Town Traffic coming in on LaCleed. And then to each end of Watson Road.
And they're not movable?
No, they won't be movable. They're they're going to be stationary.
They're stationary, okay. Um, my other concern is that, um. The, the, um, I lost my turn of thought, I'm sorry, that, um. Is is that whenever you have an app, like an app on your phone, um, you get updated privacy policies, right? And so with this, the they, they're known for thirty days, it, the data all goes away. They don't share their information. Now, right now, however, down the road, that might change.
They notify us of any changes to those type of.
And I appreciate that. However, we as a board. Need this as well.
Right.
So I think what I would want to see is if we had an ordinance that passes something like this, that the board has to be notified. That something like, and it doesn't have to be every time they get, because privacy policy is updated all the time. But, um, you know, the cloud changes or if there's a data breach or something along those lines, significant. And and it could be outlined, I think. You guys could figure that out much better than we could, but, um, we need to reapprove it. Sure. If if major, um, something major changes in this program is what I would want to see.
I totally agree. Good idea.
Agreed. No, my question was you flashed a lot of yellow. Uh, how many cities actually, uh, operate with the block cameras right?
Bowland, Brentwood, Bridgeton, Chesterfield, Clayton, Prestwood, Creve Court, DePere, Ellisville, Eureka, Farmington, Festus, Forest, and Frontenac, Glendale, Herculaneum. Jefferson County, Kirkwood, Ladue, Lake St. Louis, Manchester, Maryland Heights, O'Fallon, Richmond Heights, St. Anne, St. Charles County. St. Charles County and Fenton, Pasadena Hills, Valley Park and Wildwood. Sunset Hills, Town and Country, University City, and Wunsfeld. They also have them at Wunsfeld's Parks and Rec and Maryland Heights Visitor Center. And Webster Grove is just, I think, just found out that they were approved for a grant and it just got approved by their board as well, but they haven't got the actual cameras up yet. So. Um, they're not yet on this list, but these are the ones that actually have cameras up and running.
Yeah, right.
And we actually have access that we can, we enter a plate that we're looking for that's stolen. We can, it will go over their cameras too and let us know that it passed through and at what time.
Very good. Alright, any other questions that go to chief?
Mine's just final statement that I wanted to make sure the timeline, uh. What we were looking at is that Mr. McDermott, I was not available for the November twenty second, uh, meeting, and I believe he brought this to the attention of the board at that time. Just a questionnaire point and thoughts. Uh, who brought my attention on the twenty ninth, I shared that, uh, I, as of Saturday, sent this out to the board as well, because I don't know if they were. Completely, I think we were going through a budget, you're going through a variety of different items.
Right.
We're trying to do the best we can through checklist points. So this is going to become a more focused thing. And I went to reassure Mr. McDermott that this is something that we're going to take very seriously.
Right. And that's why I didn't want to bring it up purpose, I wanted, I wanted to make sure everybody has two weeks so they can come in with those, and especially with him bringing in his. His questions as well. So we have time to look over those and so that Mr. Damien. Has, uh, time to look over those as well to add, to address those concerns, most definitely.
Thank you. Very good.
Good conversation. Alright, any other discussion? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, now we're going to move on to item F, which is our RFP for organizational assessment and salary survey. And Diana and Elliot, I'm going to let you take the lead on this discussion.
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, board members, you have in your packet a very preliminary draft RFP. For an organizational and operational assessment. As I put in my memo, um, internally, we started looking at. Uh, what this would look like after the board did authorize the fifty thousand dollar, uh, uh, funding. To pay for it. And, uh, that we had a couple of questions internally that we would really like a little bit of clarification and direction from the board on. Um, specifically, um, the, the goals of this assessment. There has been, uh, certainly some previous conversations about a five-year strategic plan. Um, a organizational assessment and a salary survey. Those are kind of three separate components. And in the budget discussions, it had kind of been, um. From what I remember and what we, we, our internal conversations were, had been kind of zeroed in on the organizational and operational assessment, but we didn't want to ignore. The, uh, five-year strategic plan aspect of that. And if the board does want to move in that direction, it would, um, certainly change our RFP and the, the, uh, type of proposals that we'd be getting from that. So. That's kind of the main point of this discussion is the, um, the draft RFP as it's submitted is kind of our initial crack at this. And then our internal discussions departmentally. Uh, excuse me, in the department head meetings, um, kind of left us a little unsure as to what the, the main goal of this is and kind of the timeline for it. So. That is a primer for this discussion and and anything you guys can provide as far as feedback to help us, um. Best put this together so that we get the best result for the board with the residents of Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Right, Diana, anything you need to say? Okay, discussion?
Um, I have some thoughts on this. Um, I just want to make sure, and I'm gonna read through it again thoroughly, but I want to make sure that the board has. Some oversight to the RFP. That it's not done just internally, that there's some board representation on this process. I think it's really important to show some diverse viewpoints. Uh, our views when it comes to this, um. I also submitted, uh, we had both Richmond Heights and Glendale who have both had a salary study done in two thousand twenty one. I mean, we're beginning in two thousand twenty three, so I'm going to say a year old, that's technically two thousand twenty two, was right here. Um. I do, I am interested in the internal workings and recommendations of the city. And I would say that. Based off of that, any thoughts of any sort of moving forward with any other directional points? That we at least wait until this process is done. And that, uh, implementation or our, uh, the tax income that comes in, that we're able to sustain until we have a better idea, A, what taxes look like, B. This process, that we're more engaged on this process, so that the board is as well, not just an individual that boards are.
I think that's, I think that's the goal of, of, of the board is to make sure that we've got the information to make the right decision. Uh, that will talk extensively about during the budget process and the approval of the budget.
And I guess I may be throwing my hat for that. Thank you.
For me?
I may be throwing my name in the hat for that recommendation. So good.
There we go. Uh, that's fine. And, uh, just, uh, so you know, we, what we want to do is. To be perfectly, uh, transparent on this. Uh, the plan is to take the information that the board, US board members are giving us tonight. And tomorrow morning have a meeting with the department heads that help, uh, put together this RFP. Now, here's where we're at with, with the timeline on this. And the department heads know this because we've had somewhat of a discussion on it before. Is that it's going to take anywhere from, once we choose, uh, a vendor to do this work. We're finding out it's going to take anywhere between twelve and sixteen weeks to get the results. Because they're going to be interviewing. Department heads, so and so, but they're going to do all their due diligence and then put this report together. So. The goal kind of, you know, is sitting out there that we have someone, uh, someone that we, that we want to hire by. And have them hired by, say, March the first. That will give us, you know, twelve, hopefully we could get this done in twelve weeks or less. There, we're here in twelve to sixteen weeks. But, uh, it's just a long process. So, uh, we got to get on this right away. And that's why at last week's department head meeting. I asked the department heads to meet tomorrow morning after this meeting tonight, after the direction that you've given the board. In order to be able to put together an RFP and would be happy to, uh, have you all look over that RFP. Or any comments, or it actually goes out.
And will this be sealed? Will these be sealed bids to the, to the RFP?
Oh, to the RFP, I, how's that, how would that work, Elliot? I'm not sure.
It can be. Um, we can add that component to this RFP. They don't have to be, but we can, we can add that.
I'd like that, that way they're. Yeah, I like that.
Does anybody have any objection to that? I don't.
I don't see, what's the, what's the point?
Uh, I, seal, sealed bids just means that we don't open any of them till the, the deadline. Um. We use them sometimes, uh, for mostly for public works, um, projects, just to make sure that all of the, you know, a lot of times. Sealed bids are for contractors who want to know that we are assessing them and giving the bid to the lowest, best. Um, uh, proposal. Um, so they come in here to city hall and they all sit around a conference room and watch us open them and we do a bid tally sheet. Um, something like this, uh, you know, we could certainly do that. I wouldn't imagine that we're going to get a lot of in-person, uh, representatives from these companies for a project like this, but maybe, I mean, and there's.
We will.
I wouldn't say there's a reason not to, other than, you know. If somebody really sealed bids, they might not submit one. I, I don't know. I don't think that's a real problem, though.
Any other comment about the sealed bid process? Okay.
That we will be requesting. And one for the strategic plan. And that we would incorporate that we could. Choose one vendor for all three, a combination of one, two, um, but we, we would have that option to, um. You know, use different vendors. Um. One of the most important things for the RFP though, as Elliot had mentioned. As well is what the board's goals are. The, the, the better we can define the RFP. The better results we will receive. So that is why we are asking for, um. What the board would like to see from the study.
Yeah, we don't want to get down to having this study and then say, well, that's not what we wanted. That's not clear. That's not whatever we can. So that's a waste of time and a waste of money. So, uh, you know, you brought up about the sealed bid. Uh, is there any, uh, how about the five-year strategic? Anybody have any? Uh, is there any, uh, how about the five year strategic? Anybody have any, any, your thoughts? Just.
I just think we, you know, we, we want a, a true overall assessment of our city, you know. Buildings, departments, staffing, just giving us an idea. Of our city in general and, and then obviously they would make some recommendations, I would imagine on. You know, where they see that, you know, some changes could be made. Just understanding that it's something that would let us. Understand as we move forward and we start making decisions for the twenty twenty four budget. We have a clear picture of where our, our city sits. Cause they may look at something and say, hey, you know, this department is spot on, don't really need to touch it. You know, this department, you may need to make a few tweaks here or staffing is too high, too low. You know, if they look at the assets like the pool or the city center or the public works or public safety, you know, kind of putting in, you know. Recommendations on which ones are more pressing than others, just as we move forward, we have a clear understanding of, of where the, the city's sitting and. We can make the, the most um, educated decisions moving forward.
So uh, I guess the, maybe cut it down a little bit more. Do you want to ju- just see it for the immediate time period or do you want to project out five years into the future?
I, I think that's part of the problem I'm having right now. I love that trying to go for a good gold standard of five years, but. We got to draw a walk run by moment here.
Right.
Um, I, I do like projection ideas. I do think that we have to have a strategy, a long-term goal here, but. We need to figure out what's going on here first before we can actually go into that strategy. And that's just my two cents. I love your chief payment as well.
Personally, I would agree with you.
Uh, what you just asked for is more of a twelve, twenty-four month process, several hundred thousand dollars. That's not what we planned for. No.
Will you explain that? Say that again.
What, what you just described is more of a twelve, twenty-four month process. Of a, a large group coming in consulting and several hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars in the project. We not budgeted several hundred thousand dollars for somebody to come in and revamp our state.
Do we know, like, are there parameters? I mean, this is something new for me as well going through. I'm like, what does fifty thousand dollars get us? You know? Like John, I didn't know that, what, what John was saying is a.
That's what we're.
Hundred thousand dollar process. Like, are there, can, can the vendors tell us what they can give us for?
Well, that's what we're going to find, well, that's what we're going to find out with the RFP.
Okay.
You know, uh.
I just don't want you to set your goals too high and exceed expected.
No, my expectation would be is if we, I mean, obviously we're going to have them parted out. So if we. Put it out there to say this is what we want. Someone comes back and they say it's, you know. Two hundred grand, but you know, fifty per, like, so say we haven't parted out or they say, hey, you know, it's going to cost. Let's say. Say they, they, we ask for everything and then they, they part it out like we, we request and then they're just for numbers or just for discussions sake, say that. The public safety building is, you know, forty nine thousand and then. Tony's building is this and that, then we can kind of look at it and say, all right, let's pick and choose where we want to.
Now you're going down completely difficult.
Yeah, that's.
Excuse me, looking at the departments, take the building out. Looking at the apartments and everything of that nature. They, our like, asked to say, hey, we want you to come in and look at our staffing for the entire city. I mean, if that's what we want to look at.
I think that's what we want to look at.
My biggest concern would be looking at staffing and making sure that's that properly. Like, and then, then you have to limit that to a staffing survey. Yeah, and then you can do a staffing one, but that's the request. You put it out there. If we just put the staffing one out there, we're only going to get staffing.
You could do staffing and, and salary and that's about all the money we have. Probably thirty thousand dollars just to do those. Yeah, right there. Nothing to do with a building or nothing.
Cause looking at policies and procedures is a very intensive process.
But it all needs to be done without a doubt.
Yeah, without a doubt. I'm sorry, Betty, you've been trying to make a comment.
Th- this is the problem with Zoom. Anybody who wants, needs to make a comment is ignored kind of. I was only, I was only going to say. That what we approved in the budget was fifty thousand dollars and it was to be for a municipal review, which to me says. Staffing levels and efficiency. Um, so. I don't think we need to throw the kitchen sink at this because as Chief said, it would be very expensive and that's not what we. With the finance commission's recommendations, that's not what we agreed to do. So. We can change, if you want to change it, I say we go back to the finance commission and say, hey, this is what we're going to do. Too bad. Uh, we don't want to do what you wanted us to do, but they were seriously wanted us to look at a municipal review. Which is what this RFP says to me.
And I, we need to do it all, but it's a matter.
Well, we do, but that's, we, we didn't fund all of it.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other uh, comments, direction?
The only thing I, I would bring up too on the, there, thank you, I'm sorry. There's four categories in the, uh. It looks like the salary survey is pretty. Explicit as far as what that means, but the other three are very, very broad. They talked about expenses and efficiencies, but there's really nothing in there. And I'm just bringing it up just for clarity that I think it should be. Included in that, on a revenue side. How are revenues doing? Are, are we doing the right thing as far as revenues? Can we make more money in the parks and recreation? Can we make monies in other areas that we're overlooking? And I'd like, I'd like to see something in there about revenues too.
Can we afford that though? Yeah, right.
Yeah, it was about affordability, but.
And I know, which, which do we put first? But in looking at the, the five year strategic plan, it would encompass. Revenues and expenses. So looking at all the different types of revenue streams. Expense efficiencies, et cetera. So, um. Having, having a strategic plan and having a consultant. So an independent third party come in and guide us through that. Will not be as expensive as. The organizational assessment.
I would, I would like to, um. I'm, want to second Betty. I think Betty is spot on with what the finance committee recommended and that we budgeted. However. Um, I'm very much in favor of the five year uh, organizational. Plan. I think cities need to do them. They need to do it on a regular basis. I think they need to budget for them. We have not done that. We did not budget money for it. So I think it's something that we put a pin in, we do what the finance committee recommended. And then we go forward after that. And then either, I know you hate budget, you hate budget adjustments, so we. But, but then we either do it afterwards or we budget for the next year. But it's absolutely vital that we do one, but I think after we do what the finance committee recommended.
As a department, so we do actually do that. We do a five to seven year. Planning.
Oh yeah, no, no, no. And I think it's important. However, it's vitally important with the five year strategic plan. What's so important is that. You have somebody from the outside come in. Number one, so you have an outside voice. Which is, it's really important to do, but then also is that you get everybody together and you also bring in voices from the community. To come in and say what they think is important. So because you have people that. You know, uh, that not only police and fire are very important, but the parks are so important. This is why we love our streets and you find out. Where, where, what we really want to keep, because sometimes those voices get muffled. And, or what you need, what you really want to see going forward. And it's not just with the city and with the departments. It's also. Maybe with housing and, and different aspects. And so that's why you, you see what's vital to your community and then going forward. Um, what, what you're maybe missing and what you, you need to focus on. So. Um, and you guys are doing a great job. You really are. You do focus on the future, but it's coming together as one. And so these are very important. Um, it's, so it's just needs to be budgeted for, I think.
I have a curious comparative as well. I mentioned Richmond Heights and Glendale and I want to circle back to that for a second, that they just did a study in two thousand twenty one. Which is very recent. And I believe Director Madrid did one as well. I would be interested in where all those numbers tie together. How far, was she on target? Was she off target? Was she high? Was she low? Uh, were they high? Were they low? Were they close to each other? I just think it's important to look at as the overall. We have three different sources. I think that's a good start, maybe as well as looking and investigating what we're looking at too. So I wanted to say, thank you.
Good. Very good. All right. Anybody else?
I, Mayor, if I may, I, I would say that uh, I'm getting a sense from. The board that they are wanting to move forward with the recommendation of the finance commission. To do the organizational assessment at this time. And potentially do a salary, salary survey of considering the analysis that was suggested by Alderman Peters of the Glendale Richmond Heights and internal. Uh, data. Is, is that where you'd like us to go with the, the further development of this draft RFP? I guess maybe I'm just looking for a, a, you know, a yay or nay on.
Say if we can part it out, you do the first one, which is just a, a, you know, a survey of the city itself and. You know, the departments and whatnot. And then secondary, um, if they want to put in for their bid for a salary survey. Um, but in the meantime, I think we, while we're going through that process, we should. Look at the information that Keith has provided and then what Diana's also done internally and kind of take a look at those numbers. Um, because if we get to a place where the board is at a happy medium with that salary structure. We could use those monies towards something else down the road or anything.
Makes sense. All right. All right. You, are you clear?
Yeah, I think we've got enough direction to move forward. Again, we'll, uh, all the department heads are going to meet tomorrow morning to discuss this and uh, we'll have something to bring you guys for the work session on the twenty fourth.
All right, all right. Thank you all. Let's move on to department head reports. Chief Damon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, as you know, we recently joined the uh, Central Core Training Consortium. Uh, it was included in our budget this year. Uh, and we have completed our first uh, big training with them. All of our captains and myself completed an eighty hour online uh, instant command, step trackings and strategy course. And then at the end of December, uh, completed a twenty-four hour course and put on. By the central core training. So that went very well. We were all certified as, as strategic executives commanders. And we're working with them, uh, moving forward with that training.
Very good.
Thank you on that.
Thank you. Any questions to the chief on that? Sorry.
My chief.
Chief Argus.
Yeah, I have my written report. I did want to add, um. First off, thank you for letting us do the um, official swearing and impending of our new officer, Officer Hunt. She's been doing a very good job so far, so we're happy with uh, getting her on board. We're still working on the second hire. We're hoping to have a start date around the first of February. I have. A meeting with a possible candidate tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon, sorry. We were notified on Friday that our Kalia annual CSM review will be February seventeenth, February twenty fifth. Um, Lieutenant Malusian. Completed an online eleven week uh, accreditation manager. Certification training. So he is now officially the accreditation manager for Kalia. So I get to do this to him and say good luck. Uh, now he and I will be working to get our proofs and stuff ready for the uh, CSM review in February. Captain Goward and I will be attending Command College for eleven weeks starting to January twenty third, but I will be available for the CSM review on the evening hours during those times. So. It shouldn't be an issue. Lieutenant Malusian's been doing a great job in getting our proofs and stuff in there, so I don't have any, any uh, concerns about that. And I did want to bring to your attention, um, we may have a possibility of obtaining a canine unit. Uh, at no cost to the city to include the dog, the training. We've already acquired, uh. Veterinary care, um, should we get this taken care of? The only thing that we will need to do, the officer was talking about doing a fundraiser to raise about twelve thousand dollars to get one of our cars outfitted for canine. Sergeant Schindler has been working on this for several years. There are several agencies um, out there that. Donate dogs to police departments, um, and provide the training and everything that goes with it. Couple of them are from um, parents who lost sons or daughters in the line of duty. And this is how they're carrying the memory board of their lost ones. So um, I will keep you updated as I get more information. I've been talking to Diana to get um, with our insurance agent as well to make sure that we have everything covered in that. And I will let you know any. Additional costs or anything that comes up as we get more information on that. I just didn't want to spring it on you one day and say, guess what? We have a dog. Um, we had talked about possibly if we, you get approved to do it and it's approved by the board. We want to involve the community as much as possible. So we'll. Do something in the lines of helping, having the community decide what the dog's name will be and that type of thing. So we'll do a couple of different activities. Um, is what we're talking about right now, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. So if you have no questions, I will be finished.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Chief.
Thanks, chief.
All right, Diana.
My written report was included in the packet. I would like to highlight a couple of items. The payroll deduction for employee medical insurance. Or dependent coverage will begin this first pay period in January. Uh, the board approved a seven and a half percent. Premium contribution for dependent health insurance coverage. And uh, I've got those amounts in, in the report. Um, I have scheduled the twenty twenty-two audit field work for the week of April seventeenth. And uh, this year it will be timely so we can file. Um, all of our required reports. Before June thirtieth. And finally, um. Along the lines of the annual audit. As you know, the board authorized um, a city clerk. Finance clerk position in the twenty twenty-three budget. And until we can get that person hired. A temporary contracted finance clerk is needed so we can. Keep on track. To be ready for the audit. A little background. We did have a contracted part-time accountant through U H Y. That was working about sixteen hours a week. And she was with us uh, June through November. When she left, there were approximately seven weeks of funds remaining that the board had approved, a little under nine thousand dollars. Uh, I had a replacement lined up to start. December twenty first. Uh, but we felt that with year end. Vacations, you know, the holidays, uh, that starting in January would, would be best. I discussed this with the mayor that we were deferring. The start from December into the new year. We were able to find someone and she did spend two days with us last week. And I wanted to ask the board formally. Uh, for approval to utilize the budgeted funds for the city clerk slash finance clerk. Until the position can be filled. Um, the amount would not, for the um, contracted accountant would not exceed. The monthly budget for that position. And. An update on. Interest in the position, I'll hit you, I think you sent me about five. Resumes, um, I don't know if we've received anymore. And uh, we are hoping to have that position start in February or March. So I don't.
It was budgeted though, starting January, right?
Yes, and, and so, so um, I've calculated what the monthly. Uh, personnel expense would be and I would not exceed that amount. Um, and then once we got that position hired, then we would no longer need that contracted position. And then once we got that position hired, then we would no longer need that contracted position. So I don't know if I need an official yea or nay from, from the board since it's not an employee, but rather a contracted position.
So Director Madrid is requesting the use of the funds that were allocated for the city clerk finance clerk for a period to be determined by the filling of that position for a part-time accountant. So I think that would, just like we did last year, require a vote of the board.
Is that a?
Need a motion?
So did I would simply need a motion? Would it be a budget amendment, a motion? No, no. So I would just need a motion to approve that.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have, we have, we have a, we have a, we have a motion, we have plenty of seconds. So I think we're, I think we're good. We're not going to ignore you anymore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? We've got it. Thank you.
Any other question? On finance? Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. All right, and Tony?
Here in board, you also have my written report. Has that long three-week vacation that I said I was going on, I ended up getting two days out of that. That was nice. So I'll be in three emergency sewer lateral repairs come in. So then during my little vacation, I had with COVID first time for everything. So it's like, okay, but I, everything was, didn't feel nothing, runny nose. But um, the sewer laterals, they came in right around Christmas time, whatever. There was a family that had people, family members coming in from out of the country to that residence and their lateral was done. It was not. But we were able to start digging on it the next day, got them fixed up and they had their family. Christmas was there. There was two other families that had some emergency stuff done, but I was able to do a lot of the stuff from home and make the calls and just make, make the thing fly.
Yeah, I got a nice email today from your first one that you did the next day, which you sticking to the Geisman's.
Yeah, yeah. Super, super nice people. And you know what? I don't regret any of it. I was tickled thinking to come back and help our residents. Who wants that in their basement?
And they noted how happy they were with the way you handled them and that you took your time. You dealt with this on your time off and they really appreciated it. And I know you've got a copy of it in your Alderman.
And I appreciate you more when I do that. It was nice of them to do that. But like I say, I, I was happy to do it. Other than that, all the holiday decorations are down, put away. Thank goodness. We're still working on the street sweeper. We have made some repairs to the side room and stuff. So now that thing is retracting and going back to where it is. We had some Roth ends. We're a hydraulic cylinder. So we had that all rebuilt and that's all working. I'm still waiting on that valve to come in so that we have adequate brakes and steering in this thing. But we're still, we're fighting it. I mean, it's, it's working fine. I mean, we're getting, we're getting used to this thing. But it was out today and we're taking advantage of this weather. We also had a salt spreader kind of blow apart on us at the end of the little winter ice or whatever the heck that, what anybody would call that, that minus thirty-degree weather. But we do have, we had to get parts for it. We had got it all back together and then realized that the conveyor chain was sharp enough to shave width. That's how thin the steel was. And it is eleven years old. You know, so we ordered a chain. It came in two days. It's all back together. It's up and ready to go again. Hopefully we all need it. It's going to be fifty degrees for the rest of the winter.
Of your mountain, God, yes, yeah.
Up and running. Everything else was going good. I did give the green light to Fred M. Luth, and I talked to the mayor about this too, with this weather's being like this. It's like, get in here. Let's get some going. So they did start on Melbourne. They did dig out again, and they're putting a concrete base in. And hopefully next week they'll be able to come through in asphalt top of that concrete. So there is like an inch and a half to two-inch lift, but there's concrete base in there and they're putting plates down. So nobody's being out of their driveways. So they're now working around the corner from Melbourne to St. Vincent. And then we will work to Sutherland and hopefully the residents over there just keep hanging on like they are. And this weather stays like it is. And all that means is this summer, they're going to be the heck out of here a lot sooner than what we planned. That's our game plan. Other than that, that's all I have to. If anybody's got any questions. Yeah, I'm tired of calling.
You're tired of talking and they don't have any questions. Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board. Yeah, my written report as well. Most of what I was going to say has been touched on, the overall success of our search for the city clerk finance clerk positions. I think it's going pretty well and it's going to be soon for that. The vote of the board this evening to add the retail sales tax for recreational marijuana. I'll make sure I'll work with our city attorney to make sure that that gets at the certification paperwork or collections in adequate timing. Not sure what that means, but I think we're all good. Betty, can you still hear me? Yeah. She's. And other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thanks all.
Thank you, Elliot.
Thanks, Elliot.
All right, we'll move on to item H. I have no report tonight. Is there any item I, is there any old business that come before the board?
You said new business?
No.
Old business?
Sorry.
There ain't none. We'll move on to item J. Any new business that come before the board?
I had two topics. One, I, if there's an opportunity to give us, give us an update on the Rothman property, on the retail setting on the front end of it that we approved. It's a C one category. I'd like to know the status on it's been, it's been some time. I know that we had an agreement where there was a certain dollar amount that was associated with that. I think it was a three-year. We're getting real close, I think, to that. I'd like to know when are they going to start framing out? Is there next steps? What is the updated process for that?
Uh, sure, I can address that as best I can. As far as the pilot agreement that was part of the development and authorization from the board for the extra space, the conversion of the Rothman property to extra space, that I believe was a five-year agreement. We're in year three of that. And they did, we did just receive a significant check from the development company that owns that property for the two thousand twenty-two taxes, retail taxes that the property would be generating if they had developed it. So as far as that agreement, it's still in place and still projected to be completed. I did speak to the owner or I should say a representative of the property, the owner of the property recently, and they are still seeking tenants for that frontage area. I know that when they first came to the city, they had you know, informed us that they were very close and that didn't really work out. But we internally, we consist consistently have been sending them references and options that we believe would fit well in that. And it's really kind of up to them to make that agreement with a prospective tenant. And, uh, you know, good on the board for putting that development agreement together and that pilot agreement together so that in the meantime, as they drag their feet or whatever the circumstances may be, the city is still getting a, at what was considered at the time, a reasonable retail sales tax amount for that property and what it would generate. Now, we all know that if they put something really great there that was just, you know, selling, you know, widgets left and right, the sales tax would be likely a lot more than what we're getting. But we are, in the meantime, you know, protecting the retail or the commercial aspect of that property through that pilot agreement that was negotiated by, you know, the city attorney and staff at the time and approved by the board.
Answer your question.
So they're framing, I mean, because they get to build it and then they will come type moment. That's, that little strip is supposed to be there of some sort that I remember looking at as far as the drawings went that I evaluated on a regular basis in my world. And I, I just wanted to see if there's a way to push for that process, maybe where they start picking ground out or do something to frame and then the companies will come to that process, just putting that out there. So it's, there's got to be some kind of construction of some form to start with that.
My understanding is that the first step in that process is that they are going to resurface that entire frontage area, which they haven't done yet because MSD was still completing its portion of it, but that is done now. And Missouri American Water is, has completed their upgrades up and down Watson. So then now, now that a lot of that heavy equipment will stop, will not be using that property or going through that property on a regular basis. I believe they are going to do that. And I don't know the timetable on that, but I'd be happy to inquire.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else?
Hold off on my other one.
All right, hearing none, let's move on to item K. Your citizens. Elliot, are there any citizens I'd like to come before the board?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have at least one resident that would like to address the board at this time. Come on up. Announce your name and address.
Presley Barker, five one one three Deville. A couple of things with regard to the assessment that we're contracting somebody to. I appreciate Elise's comment that citizen input, that process would be very valuable. One of the other things that I haven't heard in that, and I think it's probably one of the more important issues facing the city, particularly with regard to the convergence of first responders and salaries, is we've heard that this is a bidding war, particularly for first responders for public safety. And, you know, again, I'm, I'm speaking as a relatively uninformed citizen. But I think that's one thing where if we're getting outside people who can do some analysis, get some data, figure, we need to understand what's really driving that bidding war. And this is affecting not only other municipalities around us, but it's, it should also involve, I think, you know, St. Louis County Police, other fire protection districts around us is a very complex issue. And I think maybe this re-analysis isn't the place for that. It almost sounds like this should be a cooperative effort with several of the surrounding municipalities and county areas. But I think until we really understand what's driving that bidding war, and put that in quotes, is it just monetary? Are there non-monetary issues that are priorities for the people who are leaving? Why is it so hard for us to retain first responders? Are they leaving for other areas? Are they changing careers? Are they retiring early? I'm sure there's a fair amount of all of that. But I think that would be analysis that we would be very well served by getting data on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Elliot, is there anyone else that would like?
Yes, sir. We have another resident here in, in person who would like to address the board at this time. And while she's coming up, those joining us via Zoom, please, and please click the raise hand button on your device if you'd like to address the board after this speaker.
Barbara Luke's five one one three Deville Avenue. And I am speaking for the AARP Foundation Tax Aid Program. On behalf of the AARP Foundation Tax Aid Program in Missouri, and particularly our local district two, we would like to express our sincere appreciation for the use of your council chambers to host our annual new volunteer training program on January fourth and fifth, and also on January twelfth and January eighteenth. Our free tax preparation program, which helps low to moderate income persons and families, would not be able to function without our ability to train new volunteers. While we can use video compressing for our returning volunteers and most of the tax law training, that would not be possible for our new volunteers due to the need to distribute equipment and train them on its use. The assistance that Mr. Bucket and his staff gave us made this process seamless. The facilities are excellent and large enough to make it easy to do our training presentation without having our volunteers crammed into a small area. Again, thank you and your staff for all your help. It is greatly appreciated. And I wanted to give you guys just a little bit of a sense of how much your largess expands out into the community. Because it really does. I got some stats from the last three years, which are actually our lowest three years because that's when we were hit by COVID. And on one day in March of two thousand twenty, basically, we had shut down most of our sites. I had to kind of regroup, figure out how to get people's taxes done remotely. Many of our sites did not come back online the next year because the facilities were concerned about the liability of having face-to-face business being done. We lost about half of our paid, our paid preparers, our volunteer preparers because they were also concerned about COVID things. So before COVID, we had over two hundred volunteer preparers in District Two, which is St. Louis County South of Interstate sixty-four plus Jefferson and Franklin Counties. While we, our staff was basically cut in half, we currently have a hundred and two returning volunteers. But we trained this last week and then these next weeks, an additional twenty-six new volunteers. In that three years, and again, that's a three-year low because of COVID issues. We did twenty-two percent of the returns for all of Missouri, a total returns of ten thousand four hundred returns for the residents of St. Louis, Jefferson County. And then just very briefly to get you, give you a sense of the scope of this nationwide. AARP Tax Aid has twenty-five thousand three hundred sixteen volunteers in all fifty states. Last year, we did eight hundred fifty-two thousand plus federal returns. And we're able to affect refunds in excess of a billion dollars for a little over a million taxpayers. We focus on low to moderate income taxpayers with a particular emphasis on the elderly and the disabled and people who have household incomes of less than sixty thousand dollars. But we do not limit ourselves to that. You do not have to be an AARP member. You do not have to be elderly. We are, we are happy to help if your return is in scope. And, and if your income is again in that low to moderate level. So again, for every person that you hosted in this room, they're going to go out and spread that to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Before you go, what, is there a website that people can go to or a phone number?
They can just Google up AARP Tax Aid. That's tax dash A I D. And that will give you a lot of information.
Thank you.
Barbara, before you sit down, I want to tell you this, my neighbor, and I know you and I spoke to this, they'll come up here to volunteer as a volunteer tax prepared. He's prepared for professional tax service before. And he's very impressed with the scope of, of what the service that AARP provides to the public. So I just wanted to pass that along to you.
Well, thank you. I also was a paid preparer for one year and I'm very impressed with, I prefer being a volunteer. And, you know, in truth, that's what makes the program work. Because if we had to pay our volunteers and if we had to pay for space, it would be very difficult because we'd have to pay a fortune for equipment. You can't just do these taxes on your home computer. AARP has to get specialized Chromebooks that are individually assigned to all of the tax preparers and they are controlled by AARP. There's no personal business done on that. In addition, we have to buy routers. We have to buy printers that meet the stringent security requirements of the IRS because we're dealing with people's very, very sensitive information. And that is the major expense of the program.
Well, thank you very much. Elliot, is there anyone else that would like to come before the board?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other speakers in person, and it does not appear that we have anybody on Zoom who would like to address the board at this time. Last call for all of our guests on Zoom. Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Elliot. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I bet delay gets there every time.
Yeah, well, see you, Betty. Good night.
Thanks.